I'd like to call to order, and let's all stand for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Charles Fern.
President.
Emmanuel Zenti.
President.
Daniel Coetze.
Um...
President.
Jason James.
You.
William Prevotell.
Present.
Kenny Eich.
Present.
Very good.
To staff, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there was supposed to be an orientation, but given there would be your mandatory ethics training on the 30th of April this month, at 1:00 here in the chambers, so we have decided not to add that orientation because basically the same thing is going to be done. And also, we have a plaque to recognize Mr. Seifried here, who has served this board for over two decades. And I know his presence is going to leave a big void behind him, so we take in the planning department, we have some plaque to give to him. We have also one for Mr. Castor, he's not present here tonight, but Mr. Seifried is here, and we would like to recognize, you know, his service, his law dedication, and professionalism to the city.
Absolutely. We could go ahead and do that before approval of the minutes, before we move on with the agenda, if that's okay with everybody.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Seifried, I'm going to come down to that podium down there. I think it might be easier to, and maybe we can all come down in front there. I've got to turn this around this way so we can get it on record. Do you hear me okay, Ms. Cameron, gentlemen? Kevin?
Kevin, you've got to turn around.
Yes, we have.
Yes, I have to do it this way now, okay? Thank you.
Stand between here. I know on behalf of the city and also your fellow commission members that you've served with for 25 years, I can't tell you what a value you've been to us. You've led us through many, an interesting set of circumstances that have come before the city and that we've dealt with, and you've handled things so well and taught all of us how to navigate through the rough waters that some of the issues we've had in the past have come before us. I can't say enough about how much I've appreciated all your assistance throughout the years and your guidance. You were, I joined this 17 years ago, and you already had eight years' experience on the, on the commission, and believe me, I learned so much from you. And it's with great admiration that, and I'm sure the city feels the same way, that I present this service plaque to you for the 25 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I know we might have a few other people on the board that like to say anything, please.
So, yeah, Kevin, I've only been on the board for a couple of years, so I think you set the bar really high, but it's definitely been inspiring. You know, me kind of being the new guy last couple of years, I learned a lot just sitting back and watching. Learned how to kind of hold my tongue sometimes and let people talk and actually listen, which is something my fiancee has been trying to drive into me the last year or so, but it's been great. It's really been great serving next to you and learning a great deal from you. Again, your professionalism is, to me, is something that, is something that, I mean, I haven't seen in many other areas, even in my professional career, my academic career that I've gone through. So, congratulations and best wishes to you, and sorry to see you go. Hopefully, I don't know, you never know, it might be temporary, but...
Well, it never will.
Either way, it was great. It was great being beside you on the board, so thank you very much.
Jason, thank you so much.
Kevin, ditto. You're one heck of a parliamentarian, you ran a great meeting, you have a vast amount of knowledge, but coupled with your knowledge and your ability to run this meeting, you're probably one of the finest people I've ever met in my life. You're a man of integrity, and you set that platform very high for everybody to follow. You really are. You know, you're a member of the Knights of Columbus and Grand Night over there. You're one of the most civic-minded individuals I've ever met. I've been in government probably going almost close to 50 years counting my military time, and I had the privilege and the pleasure of working with you when I was in the police department, the chief of police, so forth and so on. And I had the honor of sitting beside you up here and watching you in utter amazement sometimes when the meetings would just turn to chaos, and you just navigated us right through those meetings with the most professional, calm, cool, collective ability to get the job done. And everybody walked away from the meeting, citizen and colleague alike, holding their head high. And for me, and I've been in a lot of places and I've met a lot of people, war, peace, what have you, but you are, without a doubt, one of the finest human beings I've ever met in my life. Thanks for being a friend. Thank you.
I'll do the same. I'd like to, well, I'll keep it brief, but I'd like to echo Commissioner Eich's sentiments as well. I feel absolutely the same. And in a city which at times is quite crazy and has many sort of crazy characters, you've been able to maintain the calm here, and it sort of sets a tone for the rest of other meetings that go on and people's attitudes. And it's been very much appreciated to keep a steady helm during these times. I certainly hope that our council is wise enough to reappoint you in coming weeks or months. Certainly, there is a need for that, for your experience and your insight. You are a, sort of a catalog of our city that none of the rest of us truly have, that you can recall so many of the issues that have taken place, and it's been such great value to us as we've heard these many issues over my, whatever it is, nine years or so. So, I'm greatly appreciative, and again, thank you for being the, bringing us the calm within the circus. Congratulations on your first 25 years.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you, that's really very, very nice of you. Speak to the camera, all right? As we say, we will speak to the camera. I have, you know, of course, people to thank. Certainly, I'd start with Roland Gallos, our deputy city attorney. Roland, you've provided sage advice to me on numerous occasions when I've stopped by your office without an appointment, unannounced, and you always made time to take a few minutes and explain complicated issues to me. I deeply appreciate your professionalism, your leadership to the city, your dedication to the planning commission. It's individuals like you working behind the scenes that make such a difference to this community. Tanya is not here, right? Is that, no? Well, I will read into the record my thanks to Tanya Wilson Sejour for her fine dedication and support, her phone calls to me during the day when things have come up that we needed to be tuned into, and her patience and her diligence as now city planner, and I wish Tanya every success going forward. Charlie, well, you know, you've been a fine vice chair. I can't count the number of times that you have shared good observations with me to the side. You've been astute in your questioning. Clearly, you understand how to read all of those reports we get from the CBOs. Of all of our board members, you have oftentimes made the most insightful questions to people appearing before us. And I believe your 30 years in the media before you retired and went into a new line of business have sharpened your intellect and given you an ability to see through the fog of paper and get to the real issues that we've had to address. Kenny, you've been a remarkable individual. Having known you from your time as a patrolman up through your chief of police tenure here, your 30 years on the city, and your experiences in Bowling Green have brought challenges and insights to the planning commission that few other citizens could ever have brought to this body. You have traveled, and you've brought word of those travels and the things you've seen that we could use here to make our city a better, more beautiful, world-class city. Your insight and your observations are invaluable to this commission and to this city. Bill?
This has become a Wizard of Oz moment.
Well, you know, Bill, you have given me a real appreciation of the importance of architecture and how it can affect a city's growth and future. You've educated this commission through videos. You've argued vehemently at times for your particular point of view. And in doing so, you have taught all of us how architecture and design elements can greatly be improved, and you've tried your best to lead us out of mediocrity and into a better and brighter future. We do so need an architectural design and review board to complement the work of the planning commission, because in those areas, we all too often are silent, and we need to challenge the architects, challenge the builders, challenge the developers to dream a little bit and bring us into a better future. And your knowledge of valuations and how new development can positively affect valuations on projects, not just for that project, but for adjoining properties and for the city as a whole, brings a very unique perspective to the planning commission. Jason, you are the youngest member that's present tonight on the commission. I was very proud of you when you earned your license as a city engineer. You have done very well on the commission, and I encourage you to find your voice now and to speak affirmatively, strongly, and with passion and conviction on those areas where we can change the city. The planning commission can be a strong advocate for change. I urge you to play that role in the coming years. And to our new members, yes, I know it'll take some time. You'll have to go through the channels and get used to what happens and understand the flow and statutory deadlines and why we have to do something tonight and not in two months or three months. You'll adapt to that. I encourage you to accept the mantle of leadership and be a volunteer, not just here once a month, but to attend all the other workshops that are set up during the year. We're approaching the rewrite of the land development regulations. I'm proud to say, yes, I think we got a Cadillac of LDRs on the last go-around. But there are still improvements to be made, and we face challenges yet. We need to readdress the issue of building heights, virtually eliminate them, in my opinion, and remove the penalties for building a parking garage. It clearly has not advanced the interest of the city or led to better projects. And you face major challenges and huge opportunities. Don't take the planning commission as a once-a-month thing. When other workshops come up, attend them. Find out what's happening in all parts of the city, not just the particular neighborhood in which you happen to live. Be commissioners for all the city. Thank you so much. It's been a real pleasure to be here for 25 years. I can't imagine. Thank you.
I just want to add that June is only two months away, and reappointments will be coming around, and who's to say that Mr. Seifried will also be one of those that will be rejoining the commission? Let's hope that might be something that takes place. But as we go forward now, we want to go ahead and address the issues that are before us with the utmost welfare of the city in mind, that we take care of things until a new commission comes along, and we can only hope that that new commission, who may be part of us or new faces, will take on the challenges the way that we did and not let politics interfere, but the welfare of the city come first. That'll be our biggest challenge.
Well, Charlie, if asked again, I will always be happy to serve.
Well, I hope so, thank you.
Here, here.
Okay, time to go to work. Kevin, I expect a report card on our performance after the meeting, please. Okay, if we can go ahead and continue, we now need to approve the minutes of the last meeting, which I was absent at. So, this is our motion to approve the meeting minutes. I have a motion from Mr. Eich. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Prevotell. Very good, and I need to sign that copy. Do you have a copy, or I go ahead and sign, Mike? I have a copy here. Katrina? Very good. Staff, do we have any additional communications we need to address this evening? Mr. Gallos, anything?
The board members, any commissioner or president has communicated on any item that's coming before you this evening? None? Okay, you may proceed, Mr. Chair.
All right, very good, sir.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, we have to take a vote now to appoint a new chair and vice chair?
Well, the vice chair sits in, in the absence of, there's going to be, my understanding is that it's in your packet, there's going to be reappointments made for the entire board, pretty much, in January, so...
June, you mean?
No, June.
June.
In June?
After the elections.
Yeah, after the election.
I'm sorry, June.
There's been some modifications made, so, yeah, it's June. And what I would ask the commissioners tonight is that in the absence of Mr. Ernst, that someone be appointed to act as the chair or vice chair, presuming there's an absence by the vice chair. And that's what I would ask.
Normally, in the past, we've gone by seniority, so that would be between, I guess, Mr. Eich and Mr. Prevotell or Mr. James. So, I'd need to know, we would know, or the commission staff would need to know, who would be next in line to the throne, so to speak.
Yes, I agree, I agree. And you should all, by majority, designate that individual, whoever that individual happens to be. I'm not sure which one has the most seniority. But if they were to accept...
I think Mr. Prevotell.
I believe I'm next.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Prevotell would be...
It'll be Mr. Prevotell then, in your absence, to act as chair up until this commission, upon appointment, or reappointments, decides on a chair and a vice chair.
Correct, and that all that process, again, will take place in June for everybody.
Yes, sir. And that would be the term of one year. Yes, sir.
Okay. The question that I had with regards to me stepping in was with the ambiguity that exists with the fact that Mr. Seifried was a chair up through June, but I didn't understand the process. Perhaps you could clear that up a little bit as to when he was reappointed or not reappointed. And there was a conflict in fact that the chair would exist for the term of one year each year, and that started in June. So, if you could explain to me, did something override that, that...
Well, the commissioners serve at the pleasure of the mayor and city council, and that membership is coterminous with their appointments, their terms, actually. So, I believe that Mr. Seifried was appointed by the previous mayor.
Right.
Upon her departure in November, officially, a new mayor was elected to the city of North Miami. And that new mayor had the opportunity of selecting members of the commission, which were coterminous with his position.
Actually.
And that's what, that is exactly what transpired, and that would be under ordinance 1370, which specifically states how the membership of this commission is filled by the mayor and city council.
Correct.
The fact that he, the one-year term is just serving as chair and vice chair, but that doesn't rise to the level of serving on the commission.
Correct.
Did I make myself clear?
Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
You probably were too. Adding to that also is the fact that the chair is chosen by you, the commissioner, not by council.
So, council, it's all within the purview. Your membership is within the purview of the mayor and city council.
Right, because we serve at their pleasure.
Exactly.
Exactly.
If I may ask a question, further clarification. As of last meeting, the understanding was that there was one normal, one full-time seat available and two backup seats available, alternate seats. And I was just curious, what is the mechanism that two of these people that were seated on the board were removed? Were both of them appointments of Mayor Smith-Joseph? Or, because if it was at large, that would, how... And again, if I may say this, I very much welcome filling our seats and bringing in new members, and happy to see new faces. Just curious, though, again, what that mechanism was, that...
Mr. Castor, did he resign, or did he...
He wasn't reappointed.
He just wasn't reappointed.
Then, but his term should have continued on for another month or two, correct?
That was my feeling. Yeah, he wasn't reappointed by, yeah. I think some of those members, their term had expired before, and they were just being continued. They were never being reappointed. And remember, we had that issue.
The last appointments were made, that were made by the previous mayor, actually, those appointments extended, the terms ended June 2014.
Right.
You continued to serve, and these members continued to serve until the new mayor was elected in November. That new mayor had the, it was within his power to make reappointments at that point, because again, your positions are coterminous. So, departure of one council member or the mayor would cause a departure, it could cause, on a reappointment or a departure of a commission.
The special election basically disrupted the flow and the continuity of our selection process by the council and our, in the way that we operate, unfortunately.
And by way of example, our esteemed chair, Mr. Seifried, served well beyond his June 14th term.
Right.
And because of that, so he, we were blessed in having him serve continuously until pretty much today.
Our appreciation should be extended to Gene Castor as well, Commissioner Castor, for serving that extra time. If he's watching or if the message can get through to him, that's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Point well taken.
Thank you, Mr. Gallos. I'm sorry, Katrina, let me do that. Do we have any, item four, as we mentioned before, we've dropped the orientation for this evening. It will become a part of the Ethics Committee meeting. I believe, is that a gathering of all the different boards and the council, too? Everyone is...
The Florida statute requires that elected officials, and that includes members of advisory boards, such as yourselves, attend this meeting. It's pretty been, it's pretty much been made mandatory. And even if it was not mandatory, I would urge every member of every board to sit. I will attend myself, because things change constantly from year to year, and it's a real learning exercise. And I would urge every board member to attend. And it's April 30th here in this room, between, it starts at 1:00 p.m. to 5:00. So, it's a four-hour...
Can you repeat that time again, please?
1:00 through 5:00 p.m.
1:00 to 5:00?
Yes, sir.
April 30th?
April 30th, yes. Yes, sir, right here.
I believe, you know, our secretary sent an email to all the commissioners.
Yes, I got the email, and again, for the record, we want to go ahead and let everyone know that we did receive that notice. 1:00 to 5:00, it's April 30th, Thursday. If any of you work, can't get off, please let staff know so that perhaps some alternative arrangement can be made, that they could get a briefing or a quick orientation as to what took place. I'm sure there might be some alternative plans in place should nobody be able to attend because of work. I know I'll be able to attend, but I don't know about some of the other people on...
And whether or not you attend, I stand ready to answer any of your questions, because I prefer to answer your questions and handle an issue than to have it, you know, possibly blow up in your face. So, it's very tricky, and I prefer to take care of situations before they occur.
And in addition, staff was great to give us the orientation packet, which we thank very much, because it does help us as a review for it. Some of us have been on the board for a long time. I really appreciate that. And it does have a lot of helpful points in there that'll give you some advice as to how to address the issues as they come before us.
May I add one more thing? We've talked about, I've talked about this before, and it's mentioned again in this packet, because things have not changed, and that is termination of board members for this committee, and I would like it to be for any committee in the city. I expressed a concern that the termination procedure is stated as being three of the five council people of the council, any three of that five council. I think that's a, I think the intention is positive, but it could be abused quite easily. I think if there is a termination, I think one of those three, the majority of vote terminating, one of those should be the appointing council person or the mayor. Why? The example would be that you could have council person A appoint somebody. They could be in sort of the minor, political minority, and the rest of the council could then say, well, we're just going to wipe out all their appointments next week, wipe out their appointments, and so on. And that could go on down the line. I don't think that's the intention of our representational government, and I would like to see that the, our bylaws be changed prior to that, possibly even being a temptation or being abused. So, I'd like to, I will try to bring it up to city council again, but I hope that the council people and the mayor, when they appoint people, that they have some sense of security in that appointment, unless they feel that person, appointee, should be removed with the support of other people. And again, that it wouldn't even be that single person, that maybe, let's say, council person A makes an appointment, there should be a question whether that can be eradicated, that person on A board, any of the boards, can be removed without the majority support of the council. It's something, I think, that reinforces the credibility of our local government. and I'd like to see that followed, opposed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prevotell. Staff, do we have any continued public hearings?
I'm not clear as to what was the determination of the commission, is Mr. Prevotell, in the event you, in your absence, would he be sitting?
Do we need to make a motion on that?
I would, I would, but yes, just like as if it was...
All entertain?
Is it vice? Vice chair?
Vice chair. James made a motion, do we have a second to it?
We'll sit in the absence of the vice chair.
I'll second that Mr. Prevotell be in charge of vice, I mean the vice chair.
A vice?
Very good, co- vice, all right.
Although that wasn't what, that was not what I was referring to, of course.
No, of course.
Okay, different subject.
So there's been a motion and seconded, all in agreement?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, done. For what it's worth, congratulations, Bill.
Red books for everyone, Kenny, even here.
All right, we're going to go ahead and address the public hearing issue tonight. Public hearing is P C six dash fifteen, an ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine of the North Miami Code of Ordinance, is entitled Land Development Regulations by amending Article Five, Division fourteen, entitled Parking and Loading, specifically at section five dash one four zero six, entitled Prohibitive Parking and/or Storage, and amending Article Seven at section seven dash one zero one, entitled Definitions, to clearly establish appropriate regulations for the use and parking of commercial vehicles in residential districts aimed at protecting residents and properties within residential neighborhoods, consistent with the intent of the North Miami Comprehensive Plan, providing for repeal, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for codification, and for an effective date. May we have staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the proposed ordinance was prepared and placed on the agenda at the request of one sponsor, Councilman Scott Galvin, and staff recommendation is that the planning commission recommends approval of that ordinance, you know, to the city council. And again, historically, you know, commercial vehicles have never been allowed in the city, and but during the two thousand night updates to the land development regulations, this was inadvertently omitted, because we talk about, you know, recreational vehicles, but we never, there was no mention of commercial vehicles, you know, being parked in residential neighborhoods, and then so this, basically this ordinance would try to address this issue by giving staff, you know, especially code enforcement, you know, the proper, you know, mechanism to address those issues, you know, by, you know, that's why we also have, you know, even the definition of commercial vehicle has been proposed as part of that ordinance, to know what we consider a commercial vehicle, so, and this is our pretty straightforward, you know, recommendation, it's for approval, and meets, you know, the criteria set for in section, on section three dash ten zero four of the code, addressing, you know, any text amendment, you know, to the L D Rs, so staff, again, would make our recommendation to approve this ordinance, and as it will allow us to properly, you know, do our job, and then, some of the equipments, you know, that we, I mean, if you look at the, they are combining ordinance, you'll see some of the exception that we've made, because we may have somebody, you know, that's part of the job, they may have like a truck not exceeding a certain, you know, weight, I mean, goes vehicle weight, you know, that they use also for private purposes, but we would not define that as, you know, typically commercial vehicles, so that's why we're trying to provide a clear definition, so we can have a proper mechanism to deal with the loading and parking of commercial vehicle, vehicles in residential neighborhoods, so again, you know, you have the recommendation before, it's for approval, and then, this is it.
And again, the text amendment is basically just adding commercial vehicles.
Something that was omitted from the last ordinance.
To the existing wording, all the other wording stays the same, we just have added commercial vehicles.
And it really started, you know, as part of, you know, other citizens, you know, reaching out to code enforcement, also to Councilman Scott Galvin, you know, pertaining to those issues, you know, of having, you know, commercial vehicles being parked, what is allowed, what should not be allowed, because they feel like, you know, certain type of commercial vehicles would definitely affect, you know, the integrity and stability of the residential neighborhoods, but there are others, some vehicles that may be allowed in those areas also without even having that deleterious effect on the property values, so that's why we try to address throughout this ordinance, but you know, again, it's an ordinance, it's not final, so you guys feel free to add anything that you see that was omitted, you know, and then you can add some recommendation, then we can also take that to council for final approval.
Very good, Mr. Gallos?
I was going to say that it also provides a clearer definition of what a commercial vehicle is, because there was some confusion as to what that may be, so by clearly identifying and defining what a commercial vehicle is, it makes it easier for code enforcement to do their job, and it makes it easier for the public to know exactly which behavior, which act is prohibited, so it does that, number one, number two, it also offers a permitting process for those individuals that are owners of small businesses, for example, the individual with a small pickup truck that goes around servicing pools, I mean, you know, all of a sudden you're going to say, well, you know, park elsewhere, this, even though that's where he lives, and that's where, you know, this is his home.
Exactly.
So it strikes a proper balance between, you know, this rig just parked there, perhaps committing who knows what, what kinds of activities, and somebody, a small individual, business owner, it protects that individual by offering them a mechanism to come forward and say, you know, this is my vehicle, I use it for business, I also use it personally, of course it can, and so therefore, you know, I want to have a permit, and that will shield that particular business owner, small business owner, from code enforcement action.
I noticed in the analysis that permitting process would be, wasn't quite clear, is it if it's on a daily basis, or can long-term permits?
Annually renewable, that's, for now, that's what we are making, they come every year to renew, they get that because of decal.
After the public hearing, I think we'll want to address some of those issues and get some input from the commission on that if we can. Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask you have a question, when I walk on one hundred thirty fifth east of this game, a lot of the residents over there were complaining about taxis being parked over the cabs, and supposedly they park their cabs on one hundred and thirty fifth, they may live in Abentura where they're not permitted, now this will have the teeth to stop that nonsense.
One of the requirements, even to be able to get a permit to park that vehicle at your property, is that you are resident.
Okay.
If you do not reside at the property, you cannot do that for overnight parking.
It has to be legally parked, and it has to be, it has to be the person's residence.
And I remember the people coming to me saying, hey, you know, it used to be, you know, from the police department, and you just found a parking area, and you get into a car, and they figure, they... They get into a cab, and they get into, they park their cab here, and they leave it, and they leave it, and we're tired of looking at it, because we can't get spaces over here, the people in the townhouses over there couldn't park, and it's unsightly, who the heck wants to look at somebody else's cab when it's prohibited in another city?
Well, and that's where the permitting process comes in, there has, there's a, there's an application process, and there's also due diligence on the part of the city to ascertain ownership of not only the property upon which that vehicle is parked, but also ownership of the vehicle.
Okay.
So there is a mechanism in place for that.
And also, one of the language that was added to the ordinance is that, you know, this ordinance does not trump any other, you know, more stringent regulation from homeowners association, you know, condominium association, if they do not allow the parking of commercial vehicles, this ordinance doesn't give them the green light to do so.
Right, okay, all right, at this time, yes, Mr. Bulleye?
Question, if they do not, if they do not own the home or the property, have owned the commercial vehicle but live at the property, does that apply to them as well?
Ownership or residency is required, so you could be a tenant.
Okay.
As long as you're, you know, you're really occupying the property, and you're not really just parking the vehicle from another jurisdiction that does not allow that vehicle to be parked, and it's only for residential districts, it doesn't apply to commercial, so that narrows it down.
One other question with this, with regard, this doesn't have any effect on waterfront property, where I believe now our code specifically states that if you have a vessel, that vessel must be, cannot be parked in the front of your property, right? That's not...
This has nothing to do with marine vessels, watercraft, or any, and that's where the definition of commercial vehicle comes in, it actually excludes such vehicles, vessels.
I'm going to, Mr. Prevotell, I was going to go ahead and open the public hearing, do you want to?
As a follow-up to Commissioner Bulleye's insight there, she was asking whether they were owners or renters as well as their residents, as a follow-up, the question would be, is that on the property or right in front of the property as well? Who's responsible if someone parks or regularly parks a commercial vehicle in front of somebody else's house? It is public domain, is there any responsibility of the, or suppose, I have a property, and I want to park my truck on the public right-of-way, giant truck, I don't have one, but let's say we did, what is the mechanism for that? It's not directly on the property, are you going after the truck owner or driver or registered licensee, or are you going after the property owner? Or in the case of the street, are we going after them at all?
I mean, in this case, that would be your typical code enforcement violation, and then I'm, I'm not really privy to what is in that section of the code, but code enforcement would deal with that, if they have towed that vehicle, then that's something that can be done also.
If that vehicle is there for longer than what it's supposed to be, and there's nobody, you know, using it, and it's just obviously parked there, then code enforcement will have certain mechanisms, and through the police for which they operate under, they could also put a boot on the tire, and you're not moving that thing until you come forward, so, which, by the way, happened to me in Key West once, it was brother pay, financially, so, you know, there, right now we have nothing, nothing, so this is a step forward in the right direction, doesn't mean we can't, we may have to come back to you and tweak it, but you know what, this is much better than what we have, which is nothing.
So this would fall on the property owners, if they're in the public domain, it goes to the driver, the owner of the car?
And then another thing, you know, even as the fine that you try to impose, that maybe we have to look at, you know, the fee schedule of the fines, make it, you know, so stringent to be a deterrent, make the fines so high, and I know other municipalities, they charge you five hundred dollars just for parking a big truck in front of it, you see some people, they live in the house, they go there for lunch, but you know, code enforcement drives there and see the truck, and they give you a five hundred dollar fine, so that is a deterrent, because if you know you're going to get a five hundred dollar fine from the city, you're not going to park your car.
Possibly even towing the vehicle elsewhere.
Possibly towing, so there's different layers.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, anyone, I'm sorry.
I have a question for the staff.
Sure, go ahead, I'm sorry, one more question to staff?
What is our fine, what do we charge now?
Well, that's another chapter, it's another story, this is the land development regulation, this is what prohibits that use on property, chapter twenty-one will handle all the different, and the fines, I've seen, I have looked at Miami-Dade County, I have looked at Miami Gardens, I have looked at Coral Gables, I have looked at other several municipalities, I can tell you the fines begin generally at two hundred and fifty dollars and can reach five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Per violation.
That does come under code enforcement.
Yes, sir, and that would be, that's under a separate chapter, which is twenty-one, yes, sir.
And you will have the ability to tow and all that?
We would have the, depending on how serious the circumstances are, it's...
I don't know, we don't use the lockdown here on fires, doing, I don't know.
The boot on the street, but you couldn't go onto the private property to extract?
No, not on the street, on the public right-of-way.
Okay, everybody done, let's go ahead and open the public hearing one more time here, and get the views of our citizens that are here tonight, I welcome them.
Good evening, board, and as a fellow former planning commissioner for eighty years, I'm also a little bit surprised that Kevin is not up there, but I guess, you guys are in very good hands, so, good to see some of you that I worked with before, I was one of the...
Jesus, I'm sorry, we need your name to the record.
I'm just used to being on that side. Jesus Ramon, one two seven eight five Cypress Road, North Miami, I was one of the citizens that proposed this change, and I wanted to come here and speak with you about some of the reasons behind it, of course, it's been well documented so far, but wanted to give you a couple other points, there's a lot of construction going on in the city, all throughout the city, and it's become very evident that there's a lot of vans, trucks, many of them by virtue of what people keep in there, tools and things of the nature, they have tinted windows, so we have noticed an enormous amount of vans and trucks parked all over, you can look inside, they may be parked in front of your house, so that became more of a security issue. On a personal note, my wife had experience with a coworker that was taken by such a van, the only reason that person was recovered before any damage was done is it had a placard, and somebody actually noticed the name, tracked it down, and were able to intersect that van before some harm was done to that woman, so, it's great to talk about some of these other issues, but I also want to present to you guys the issue of personal safety, we have children all over the city, I'm simply concerned about those kinds of issues as well, somebody in a van parked in front of a house, takes a child, how do you find out who it is, who it was, I mean, it's almost impossible, white van, what's the description? I also took the liberty to share this ahead of time with the police department, the North Miami Police Department, for them to comment, and they were very positive, they thought it would be something that would allow them, right now they have very little, if they see that situation, somebody's parked in front of your home with dark tinted windows, there's nothing they can do, and they can just sit there, this gives them the ability to say, hey, what are you doing here? If it's a legitimate business, I don't know any reason why anybody who has a legitimate business in the trades wouldn't have a placard for advertising, if nothing else, you want people to know that you're a plumber, and here's my number, please call me, I need more business. So, yeah, I mean, and then for code enforcement, it's the obvious items, that if somebody's working without a permit, it gives the city the ability to stop by and say, hey, where's your permit, and so on, so those were the reasons, safety, number one, both for the citizens, both adults and children, two, the issue of permits, and lastly, with the approval of the police department, giving them another tool, being able to fight crime. The last thing I'll say is, and we've all dealt with this, there's a crime, the description comes back and say, well, we saw a white van, or a green truck, but there's no marking, so there's no way of following up, so those were the reasons for putting this forth to the commission, I hope you guys will approve it, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy, and to those new, by the way, welcome, you're in for a great ride. No, I mean, I learned a lot, not only from Kevin, but from everybody else, so you guys are really, it's a great board, I applaud your commitment, I thought I knew a lot until I sat in that chair, and things looked very different from up there, and those that haven't sat there, kind of, the first time you sit there and you start getting these packages, then you kind of get it, say, whoa, what did I get into, you know, meaning you want me to read this, so, anyway, so if you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Gentey, I believe, Commissioner Gentey?
Question, so in the past, has commercial vehicles been used as instruments for crime?
Sure, for example, we've had situations where, I can think, even very valued pets, you know, I'm talking about things being taken, we had a situation in our neighborhood where somebody had a thirty-year-old parrot, everybody knew the parrot by name, somebody literally took it in a van, and then called him from around the corner saying, give me five thousand dollars, I mean, that's a very simple example, but in a broader sense, think about the, I mean, unfortunately, we live in this kind of world, right, so, somebody parks in front of your house with dark tinted windows, and you call the police, and their answer is, I can't do, there's nothing I can do, that's the issue, and your children are playing there, you're, you know, that's the issue, and yes, in fact, they have, I mean, you have a chief of police, I think you're a lot better qualified than I could ever, and I'm sure you can speak to many, many such cases that are horrible, but are true.
Definitely, I agree, all right, thank you, Mr. Jesus.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Ramon, do we have any other? This is Montgomery.
I thought in our ordinance, we had in our ordinance that was a certain size truck allowed in a residential neighborhood in the estate homes overnight. And I think, I, I believe, I am very adamant about this, that we should not have commercial trucks with their names like pool companies, even if the person lives there. That company has space to store these trucks. And I mean that all over the city. It makes our city look disgusting. You go through a neighborhood and you have these commercial vehicles parked in the front lawn, on the grass, pool companies, plumbing companies, painters, and it brings our city values down. But in the estate homes, I believe we have an ordinance that does not allow a certain size, over a certain size truck. And I'd like to have this kind, this commission check on that. And there is no parking on swells whatsoever as far as any commercial vehicles. But the, the size of the trucks that are allowed in the estate homes, San Souci, Kinston Point, I believe that is in our ordinance and that should be held effective. Our problem is with code enforcement, that it's not enforced. And we can have all the ordinance on the books if we do not enforce these codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Anyone wishing to address this issue further? Please step up to the mic. Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, good evening. Mike Niedermaitz, 840 Northeast 127th Street in North Miami. I'm also president of the Central Homeowners Association. And I can tell you something that directly impacts this. I got a call, I've actually, I've gotten several calls of a tractor trailer that parks right in front of a residential home on 126th Street. Turns out that the driver of the truck is the brother of the owner of the house, does not reside there. The tractor trailer is bigger than the house, literally. And unfortunately, the gentleman cranks this thing up at four o'clock in the morning to get on the road. And if you're a neighbor next to where this tractor trailer is illegally parked, you can imagine what happens when that cranks up at four o'clock in the morning. And I can show exactly where the house is, not a resident, obviously in violation. And I think that any ordinance that continues to restrict commercial vehicles parking in front of residential houses that are a distraction to the city, deterioration of the neighborhood, not to mention waking the residents up at four o'clock in the morning, is always a good thing and we support and hope that the commission will support passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Anyone else wishing to address this issue? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to input from our esteemed panel of commissioners. Everyone with their questions and comments. We'll start at Mr. Prevotell's end.
Okay. I, I appreciate the intent of, of this and hopefully we can, you know, improve the quality of the neighborhoods, particularly for, as the example was just given, a very large truck, tractor trailers and such. I am concerned that it not be misconstrued, that there are, and I also, as I appreciate Annie Montgomery's comments regarding the appearance of certain neighborhoods when you have a, a range of commercially used, whether they're commercial licenses or not, but commercially used vehicles such as vans. But we're going to have to also, at the same time, face the reality of this is the, sort of the growing pains of a, of a, a city that is going to increase its size and its, and its dynamics. It's very hard to, you know, we are not the most affluent of cities, household by household, and therefore we probably do have our share of people that are, have their own businesses, that are the painters, the caterers, plumbers and so on. And they, they just don't have the income to be able to sustain multiple, sustain multiple vehicles. So therefore, do you, do you penalize these people in some capacity or not? I don't know if our city's in that, that well off that we can sort of afford to do that. I think where our city is trying to support the local businesses and the people trying to do such. So it is, it is part of the growing pains. I hope that those small businesses that are legitimate, that have vehicles that are not so obtrusive, can still, you know, provide their services and, and not go out of business or have to relocate. But I do hope this is, the other larger vehicles are, are held accountable and that we are able to somehow increase the quality of our neighborhood. But as we push for greater zoning and such, you know, if you look to a large city like Manhattan or any other large city, you'll see that probably half the vehicles that are parked on the street are commercial vehicles. And during the day, it could be even much more than half of the vehicles are commercial vehicles. How else are you going to serve these large buildings? And the, the vans and trucks and everything else will come in and, you know, some of them will leave, some will be there overnight. But as we start to increase our density, it, it's something, you know, that, that in some way, we're going to have to accommodate or get used to or regulate or, or just look away from. So I, I don't know exactly what that solution is, but it's coming. You know, it will increase. And hopefully with that increase, we'll compensate by having maybe higher density and maybe having greater parkland and somehow freeing up some of the, some of the streets to do this and maybe have more structured parking. And it'll be a way of not crowding us all in, not sprawling and crowding and having all these commercial vehicles on there. Maybe our planning processes by going a little bit more vertical and by hiding some of these, the, the parking areas from not having so much surface parking, that will mitigate this concern that we're talking about this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Prevotell. Mr. James?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point of clarification. The reason, why, why were vans, passenger vans and automobiles specifically excluded from the definition?
I think...
Well, I believe they're already in the code though.
There's a size limit also for what we are allowed. And then I think, you know, the city...
Is that, is that because like, if, you're thinking that if an employee works for like, I don't know, Sears or something, wants to park, they have a take-home van that they can park in there?
Because, well, you, you have to, we, we have to differentiate what, what is a commercial vehicle. You have to draw the line somewhere. A van could be commercial, a commercial vehicle, it may be a non-commercial vehicle.
So let's say, for example, Sears, they have bags, types of vans, or they have, I know, there's like a pet grooming company that's around town that's pink. I don't, I don't know the name. Yeah, like, this won't prohibit them from parking in their house, would it? Is that why they were specifically excluded?
That would, well, no, we wouldn't. That would require them to have a permit.
Just to get a permit?
Right, exactly.
It may do criteria for...
Yeah. There, there's a set of criteria which, which if you satisfy, you are required to have a permit, if that vehicle is otherwise a commercial vehicle.
Okay.
All right.
I understand.
Okay. And Mr. Gentey?
As, as far as commercial vehicle, it, it's a very broad definition. And how, how did we come to the conclusion, where we're going to draw the line, what, you know, because nine pass, you know, a, a passenger van that can hold nine passengers or more is considered a commercial vehicle. So a church van, would it be?
Well, the, and the definition is clarified, it's under section 7-101, there's a definition provided, which you, we, we would have to read in conjunction with the permitting requirement and all that. So you, you go to that definition and that tells you what is a commercial vehicle. So that, that's it right there.
And then we do have, you know, in that other section, the size limit also, should be under one-ton load capacity. So we do have that threshold. We, we look at, you know, other municipality codes, what they do, and we just didn't do this, you know, in a vacuum. So we do look at what other municipalities are doing, what are the restrictions that they impose on some of those commercial vehicles and then to come up with ours. Because we're not inventing the wheel or come up with something. Then they'll try to be creative.
In fact, anything beyond a ton is not allowed in the residential.
Exactly.
So those larger vehicles that were alluded to by Ms. Montgomery and Mr. McDeermay, those, those are clearly illegal, so.
There's no permit.
And, and by the way, parking in your front yard, those are illegal parking. So that's illegal parking and, and you will commit a violation if you were to bring any type of vehicle and park it illegally. It's illegal. It's not an issue as to whether it's commercial or non-commercial. Different issue.
To staff and Mr. Galvez, I noticed something that we didn't address earlier in the staff. There was additional language under, on page three of seven on your documents that I, I've failed to, to bring up earlier, where you're actually giving you a whole new definition. This is, this is new language, is it not?
Yes.
That was underlying?
Yes.
I wonder if, if staff can go through the, the commercial vehicles, if they could, could point that out to us, because it gives you a definition of what you all are considering a commercial vehicle. Again, it's page three of seven in your staff report. If anyone will look at it.
The definition itself would be on the...
It's under the, division 14, chapter 29, it's the ordinances.
Yep.
And you've added several paragraphs of new language, which also addresses the permits required.
I mean, the definition itself would be found in section 7-101.
Page 507. That's where the definition...
Which is page 5 of 7.
Okay. But you've added, you, you've underlined language here, which means that that's additional language that was not existing? Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly. That wasn't exist, because remember, as I mentioned before, there was no mention of commercial vehicle under section 5-1406 in, in the, in the LDR right now.
And that, and that's section G, as everyone saw.
Yeah.
Every, and for the record, I'd like to read this in the record if, if no one minds.
Okay.
Every commercial vehicle operated on the streets of the city shall of all times display plainly marked in letters and numerals a not less than three inches in height the name and telephone number of the owner or business thereof. Any contractor required licensed by the state of, or Miami-Dade County shall also comply with section 10-4B Miami-Dade County Code of Ordinances. If a vehicle is rented, the information required by this paragraph but applicable to leasing or user, not the owner, must be affixed to the vehicle. In other words, that, that vehicle would have to say budget or...
AVs, whatever.
Hertz or something like that, okay. No commercial vehicle shall be maintained, parked or stored in residential districts within the city on either public or private property, including but not limited to a front or side yard, setback area, public right-of-way, swell or parkway. That's all new language that did not exist in the code. Then you've added language that addresses the permit required. The language, the new language is, "Commercial and recreational vehicles parked or stored in a residential district may be permitted with a valid overnight parking permit from the city, which shall be obtained for up to two vehicles or vessels parked in residentially zoned properties, subject to the following." And then there's a list of 19 or so items here, which, list of what vehicles would, would be considered those that would need to be permitted. Where, where are the 19? Page four dash, four of seven, again, in your staff report. Four, seven, I see that. Now go on to the next page, page four. You said they were 19. Well, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. I stand corrected, there are 10, 11 items that would be required for permit, permit. That would be section H. Okay. Okay? Everybody see that? No, I don't. Right. I don't see it. Okay, okay, permit required, right? Right. These are where the permits are required. Right. And I'll go ahead, if we want to go ahead and look at these real quick, we'll, we'll run through them then. Commercial and recreational vehicles parked or stored in residential district may be permitted with a valid overnight parking permit from the city, which shall be obtained for up to two vehicles or vessels parked in residentially zoned properties, subject to the following. The vehicle is owned by the occupant of, of the residential property. Vehicles unoccupied while parked or stored in the residential property. C, the vehicle is maintained in a neat and operable condition, provided that major repairs, including but not limited to repairs of the internal engine, rear end transmission, exhaust system, body and chassis, shall not be performed while parked or stored on the residential property. Vehicles currently registered, D, the vehicle is currently registered, licensed or permitted by the appropriate government authority, such as police cars or, or city municipal utility vehicles. Okay? Parking permits shall remain valid, providing the permit is renewed before October 1st of each subsequent year commencing this 2015. Permits applied for renewal after August 1st of each year shall be valid until September 30th the following year. And then item two of the permit required. Permitted vehicles shall be parked or stored on private residential property in the most preferred available location in order of preference. Available locations are a carport, garage, rear yard or side yard behind the front building line. So in other words, we are allowing trailers, unhitched trailers, if I stand corrected on that. In other words, if a maintenance truck has a, a trailer that he uses to store his lawn equipment in, he can by permit use his garage, carport, near yard or side yard behind the front building line, correct? As long as it's permitted?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. Permitted, meaning that they acquire a permit. And that also includes a, a rear yard setback. And also the side yard setback behind the front building. For multifamily uses of four dwelling units or more available locations shall include a parking space in the parking lot, which I mean, I, I think Mr. Prevotell brought up that point with regards to storage on, at condominiums or apartment lots. So a, a space may be used as, and again, they would have to get a permit regardless if they're only a tenant in that building, correct? These requirements shall not supersede more stringent restrictions contained in any deed restricted covenant, conditions of use requirement or condominium documents. In other words, those condominium documents override any of our ordinance if they're strictly, knowing property management, that most of the times you'll find that those homeowners associations have a lot, far more stricter rules and regulations than our, our cities. So...